We have city manager staff reports, we have none, employee recognition, we have none, correspondence, we have none. We're gonna move to petitions and communications. F, discussions, number one. We'll have a discussion and take possible action regarding conduct of a forensic audit, and this is requested by Mayor Protem Doucet.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I put out information, I've been talking about the forensic audit. Some people have taken it as, we don't need one because we had one almost a decade ago, and stuff. And in calling for this, I also refer to codes and ordinances that we haven't been following. Most of the time, I've talked about those at previous council meetings. In fact, I've talked about them, I read them verbatim, when the topic actually came before council, and council take action. So, about four months ago, I talked with council, and I let council know that these ordinance and codes and stuff, you know, we are the ones that's here to ensure that they are upheld. We take an oath for that. You know, we all different council members, and I don't take anything personal, we all think different. However, I'm by the book. I leave my opinion outside the door, my thoughts outside the door. I read what is written, and when we do not follow what's written, we have issues. If we recognize them, we can fix them. My theory is always, first of all, we need to police ourselves, and we don't need nobody to police us. But after two years, I've come to the conclusion that we actually need someone to come in, take a look at it, and tell us what we're doing that we shouldn't be doing, and how we can do it better. A forensic audit, some people always talk about criminal. Well, forensic audit is one that you order when you feel that it's something is wrongdoing. Wrongdoing mean, you're not doing what's right. It doesn't mean it's criminal. It can result into that, but the fact of the matter is, we need to do things as written. And after two years, us policing ourselves, I just don't feel, uh, it's going that way because there are some issues that we should have resolved and we should have addressed, but instead, we don't do it. You know, it's like, okay, we're gonna continue to operate in the way we operate, and we can't continue to operate the way we operate, because look at the city. And some of the things that I feel we have not followed is a result of that. I'm not gonna discuss those, I've talked enough about them, but this on an agenda here to let people understand what it's about. And whenever I say, I would like to see one, I put examples, I write down the code, the ordinance I feel that we are not following, then I give example of what we doing, and I let citizens decide. I don't try to tell citizens we need it, we don't need it. I think that we got more intelligent citizens than we have non-intelligent, so citizens decide, but we need to make sure that everything's transparent, and that we're doing things right. And if we're doing things right, we'll spend money properly, and we'll be transparent. And those are two things, right now, is a big issue with citizens. Forensic audit will say, you're doing this wrong, this is what we recommend you do, in order to fix this. It's better to fix it than to let it continue the way it is. And it also has the opportunity for someone to take a look at our books, where we don't get to look at. We get to see what they're given. And when I say forensic audit and stuff, I want to make sure I throw this in at the end. Our finance director got here, I guess, about a year now, but I've been working and talking with her. She is outstanding. She has really done things that are amazing. You know, our audits, annual audits, we're like two years behind, she came in in one year, she done those two plus hers. That's the kind of thing we need done, but we need to go back and fix this not following ordinance and local government codes. So, after, if anybody else got any comments, I'll let them comment. If not, I wanna make a motion.
I have several lights. Councilmember Frank?
Yes. Um, I've heard, um, I don't stand to talk or have my light on to talk against an audit, a forensic audit. I'm simply raising some concerns about how do we arrive at the issue of a forensic audit? I don't know, I don't know in any specificity exactly what those concerns are that have driven us to this pointed place where we have that type of concern from council or from our citizens. I have not heard from our citizens, I am an at-large councilman, I don't represent any districts, but I've not heard any council, I've not heard any citizens come to me and raise any concerns with me about the financial discharge of our duties here on council that would warrant a forensic audit. Councilman Doucet has made the comment, used the word wrongdoing, and has said that he is not specifically referring to malfeasance, that is, the misappropriation of funds or embezzlement, or any of those types of situations. Our internal controls are audited with our audit, and we have received great audits here to fore. They've looked at our internal controls, they've looked at the way in which we carry out our budgets, the way in which we pay our debts, we have a credit rating of A++. Our finances are in order, we've looked at situations and circumstances, and I don't know exactly, again, as I said with specificity, what is warranting the concern about a financial audit. One of the things that I do have a concern about is, is that the payment of the, of this audit, we're talking about an expenditure of about, oh, anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000. We just concluded, if you're talking about a forensic audit, we're talking about $200,000 plus. So, we've not, we've not budgeted for that. So, we're talking about making an amendment, and so, as the councilman's talking about making a motion, how are we going to fund this forensic audit if we've not budgeted for this forensic audit? And the councilman is always talking about budget, budget. We just come out of our budget hearing, we've, we've talked about expenditures, we went through the budget, and we all raised our concerns, so how are we going to fund this forensic audit? One of the things that we do is, he, you know, we can say, well, we can, we've got money in the fund balance and all of those things. When we amend a budget for something of an emergency, if you will, one of the things that is about public health and safety. And so, this is not about public health and safety. This is about a concern that the council or the councilman has concerning our internal controls, I believe, or whether or not, I don't know exactly, again, I don't know what is covered by this word wrongdoing. I, I did some research, and I looked and found that when we talk about a forensic audit, there's some things that you look at, some things that you understand. You talk about a response to suspected fraud, or you talk about resolving disputes, you talk about all of those types of things that can happen as we address some conflict or whatever. I think that we can try to talk about those things and try to address those concerns without making that type of expenditure at this particular time. If we want to have a, if we want to have an forensic audit, let's put it on the agenda for next year, when we can budget for it, and that way, we don't have to make that kind of withdrawal. But I don't believe, and I'll, I'll yield to our attorney and to all of those who are in council, but I don't think that we are able to vote on this on today because of that fact, that we don't have a method of funding it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Frank. Councilmember Kenlaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kinda like in the gray area as well. If we're talking about, and the councilman made some comments, Councilman Doucet made comments about fraud and abuse, and also wrongful doing policing ourselves, you know, as councilmembers, it's our job to ensure that we protect the citizens at all costs, especially with the financial aspect of it. Our financial director, in the last year, completed three audits that would kinda give us some better directions on our finances and how we, we pay our bills and how we accept payments. So, I thought about this when he brought it up last meeting, two meetings ago, and made reference to policing ourselves. So, I have no direction, understanding of where he's going with, with this, what department. We're talking about financial abuse, of course, that every council member that's up here would have some concerns about that. We don't want that to happen in our city. But, you know, without having a clarity on what direction, what department, who's doing it, how much are they doing, I mean, he may have some information I may not be aware of, that I'm surely is wanting to understand his point of view. But just to do that, and I've been privy to be on a forensic audit before, and it's, it's very tedious, and it's very expensive, and they look at all the departments, all your financials, all your expenditures. They even look at the policy procedures that you have in place to sustain that. So, yeah, it's, it's a stretch for me without having detail of where he wants to go, or where the forensic audit wants to go, yeah, in my opinion. But, you know, not having clarity on what department, who's doing it, surely it's not council, I mean, but, at the same time, the finances coming from city manager and the financial director and how we do our business, you know, I, I need more clarity on how, where, when, and how much, so, before I can get on board with this. Because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, if, if we have zero findings, the taxpayers coughed up anywhere between $200,000, $400,000, and is that fair to the tax citizens? No, that's not. But if you have some evidence, Councilman Doucet, to sustain that, I would be more than willing to under, to, you know, have an open eye, open ear, to find out exactly what are those things are. But just to, you know, this just came out of the blue within the last month or so about having a forensic audit, so, if you have more detail, I mean, please share with your cohorts and let me know personally, some of the things that, because, just to vote for that and have that on the agenda, that's kinda a stretch for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Kenlaw. Councilmember Doucet?
Yes, okay. In reference to the comments made by Councilman Frank and Councilman Kenlaw, and both of them were good comments, I agree with some of what you both said. In reference to funding for Councilman Frank's answer to his concerns, if we were to decide we needed a forensic audit, that would come under municipal purposes, which is one of the things allowed for amendment of a budget, okay? A lot of what I've said, and what I'm saying, now in responding to Councilman Kenlaw, I've been saying it for the last two years. I've been saying we're violating the streets program. I've been saying we're violating Section 2, that's 31, which we do often, in which we put items on the agenda, and we do not have it funded in the budget, and we don't have an amendment at the meeting. I just threw out a few of those things in some posts that I had on social media to answer citizens' questions. And I can sit here and start going through a whole, a whole lot of specifics, but every specific I will name, if you go back to that council meeting, I read an ordinance or a local government code that says why we should not do it. And when I finished, the council voted anyway to approve it. And I talked about this about four months with council, without this being just thrown out there today. When you do a forensic audit, you do not do all departments if you do not have to. A forensic audit is an audit that you have specific what they wanna look at, where the area that you feel there's wrongdoings or there are issues. The cost of a forensic audit is determined by your scope, is how much you want them to look at, because they will determine how many people they will need, how long it will take them. That is where the cost of a forensic audit comes from, so really, you can't determine a cost until we determine the scope. As far as citizens not saying, I'm to this point because I hear citizens ask where the money is going. I hear citizens says, look at the streets, why we don't have this? And I look at what we're doing, and I've been doing this for two years. And for two years, when I said, it's nothing done, and like I said, it's not, first, I'm not gonna question the council. If council doesn't want to either consider what is said, I understand that. But the fact of the matter is, we have to at some point understand why we in these seats, we took an oath to be in these seats. And if it's something written, let's talk about what's written. Everybody say, I don't see anything. I've been reading it. I've been saying it for two years. If you don't want to listen, or you don't, or you think it's my way, go and check. If you read the code and you read the ordinance, be specific, it's so many things we doing, we could still do those things, but there's a certain way we need to do them. And it's written. We don't do it because we have votes. That's, that's the point I'm making, so, and, no one can deny that I did not talk about this with council on my concerns about these ordinance and these codes violations. This is not nothing new. And for two years, I've, I've worked with the council. I've learned to work with people, but for the two years, I've heard Doucet wanna do it his way. Doucet knows everything. Doucet, but Doucet reading it in black and white. So, it's not that it's me, I read it in black and white. If you don't understand what's written, then ask somebody who can explain to you, because I'm not gonna do that, because I'm reading. Citizens read the same thing. So, you know, I'm not here to fight and work against this council. But let's look in the mirror and understand what citizens want. We have an approval rating from the people we paid to do this plan. That said, citizens got approval rating at 6% for this council's confidence, and the citizens are saying, what are you doing with our money? You putting it in your pocket. You put the money on this, and it, and it shouldn't go on that. If citizens are saying this, and we are truly for citizens, then where do we get them to get the trust and confidence? We talking about $200,000, $300,000. This council, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say, because this could go on all day, and I, and I've done this for two years, I'm not doing, but this is the last thing I wanna say. Someone's talking about $200,000. This council approved $395,000 for a design and a study of an extension of a street whereby the same council we setting up here disapproved that project. We disapproved it, it's in the records for $395,000, and came right back and approved it. So, we got the same resolution in the book, one approved and one disapproved. So, that's an example of what we need to fix, and we could have fixed that by following the procedures. And the procedure says, if we disapprove something, I don't care if it's five years later. We need to bring it back for reconsideration, because we need to take the one we disapproved off the records and now approve one. So, you want an example, I could be here all day, don't, don't, don't go there with me. I've been doing that for two years. Tell me why you think we should have now, and y'all stated that, and I respect it, okay? So, that's the way it is.
Councilmembers, let's be mindful, we have two times to speak on a topic, you will have 10 minutes each time.
Two.
Two minutes, I'm sorry, two minutes to speak on each time you speak. So, right now, I have lights that are, Tiffany, you have, Councilmember Phil, you may speak now, Councilmember Kenlaw, you will be able to speak next, and Councilmember Frank, but you guys will have two minutes to do that, okay?
Thank you.
And no, if you've spoken twice, you cannot speak again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Doucet, I recognize that you have, over these last two years, repeatedly mentioned things that you did not agree with. And over those last two years, this information now is, I wanted to acknowledge that, Mr. Doucet, but now this information is for the citizens. Often, when, not just often, I can't say every time, because there is no such thing as an absolute, but most of the time, a letter has been provided either from the Texas Municipal League, from the Attorney General, or from our city attorney, confirming what action we took was legal. And the times that it was out of place, then those are the times that we had to make corrections. But there have never been a time that we just purposefully, purposefully went out of line according to the definition of a forensic audit. And so, if there are specific times in a specific scope, I would ask, has a specific scope been proposed that is asking us to use a specialized investigative techniques, investigative techniques to uncover fraud, embezzlement, corruption, or other financial irregularities that our officer has not, our financial officer hasn't already helped us to correct? So, I just wanna be clear, that we have taken the opportunities to make sure that we are in order from our legal authorities.
Councilmember Kenlaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked a question for my colleague, Councilman Doucet, what are some of those allegations? He mentioned items on the agenda not funded, he also mentioned streets. I was here when we started the street program a couple of years ago, and I was on District 3, and at the time that we did that, we wanted to kinda take the politics out of play. So, we got a X-ray machine, went through the city, spent about $90,000 on there, and, and it gave us the, the report that how streets, the capacity of streets, level of damage to those streets, and council members at the time, the four district council members supposed to take that data and work with the city manager and the staff, and come up with a solution, and how are we gonna attack those streets? And then, we started that because of the percentage of damage streets, as well as the capacity of the district. And Councilman Doucet at the time, and along with Councilman District 1, were the two largest areas that got the largest monies by percentages. Now, since then, Councilman Doucet and District 1, percentages of completion of streets have increased. Now, he's, that district, District 4, is at the bottom. So, I'm not understanding when we talk about, you know, fraud, abuse, taking money out of street program, at no time since I've been on this council, we've stopped working on streets. In the history of Port Arthur, we've, this council, or the previous council, has put more money into streets in the history. So, I'm not understanding the question of if, you know, if fraud or abuse or negligence is happening, because we continuously work on streets. And that's what we're supposed to do as council members, is to work on more than one thing. We can do more than one thing. However, he, you know, my councilman, my colleague, I respect his opinion, but I totally disagree with him. You know, he had more streets done in the last five, six years than any other district. So, how has it been abused? So, my question, you know, now I'm at, at large, so I look out for the entire city, everyone has damaged streets, everyone up here gets the phone calls about they need their street repaired. So, we have to come up with some type of on our merit, but at no time, don't be misting, misguided, that these streets programs are continuously. The one thing that we have an issue with is finding contractors to come and do these streets, because, again, it's hard for contractors, because they got many jobs to come in Port Arthur and to work on these streets. But when we get these contractors here, city manager, we need to hold them down. We have, we need to make sure that we hold them down and continue doing the projects that Port Arthur has. So, you know, those two things that I asked, I asked it bluntly, I mean, what is your directions, what's clarification on the things that you're saying that this city is actually doing that would cause for a forensic audit? I need more clarity in just those things, because streets program, that's at the will of the council to make those determination, just like we started it in the beginning. So, if it's something more than just those two, and those things that you said when I asked the question, you said street program, and then you also stated that items on the agendas, on the agenda not funded. So, if it's something more than that, and instead of the definition of a forensic audit, I'd be, you got my ears and my eyes open. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Kenlaw. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes. Finance director, you got a minute?
Thank you, Lynn.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers?
What is our, good morning. What is our total budget for this year?
The total budget is over $400 million.
Okay, thank you. When I first came to council, we had a budget of $100 million. Now, we have a budget of $400 million. And every city manager, I've been to conferences and everything, they always say, I talk with, I spend time with different city managers, you know what they say? Watch the money. Watch your money. Find out where your money is going. Watch your money. $400 million, and y'all nitpicking about a brown bag sandwich, or, 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 $200,000 and you, and you got a $400 million, you got a $400 million budget?
Taxpayer's money.
A $400, taxpayer's money, $400 million. Taxpayer's money, yeah. They want it. They've been talking to me, I don't know where you all been, but they, they accuse, we get accused every day. Every time I talk with, I, I go to the grocery store, and, and about violations, malfeasance, if you violate a, a bond covenant, it's malfeasance. Look it up. You violate those, that is malfeasance. We have to be mindful of the money that we will spend, $400 million, and you all talking about not spending $200,000, less than $300,000 to find out where the money is going? Are we doing, we got a baseline, we have a baseline, we have a baseline. The previous, the previous forensic audit, let's compare
Let's compare, that's a reference. That's a baseline. Let's find out how, how have we improved? What are we doing, what are we doing, what are we doing better? And we gonna have some more discussions on this. And I don't have a problem with budgeting the money for, for a forensic audit, I have no problem with that. But we need to take a look. We need to look and see where our money is going. And I've heard, and I've witnessed plenty of malfeasance.
Councilmember Frank?
One who I follow and serve said that there's a tendency we have to gag at a maggot and swallow a camel. Simply said, I've seen this council argue over whether or not we ought to have a $15 lunch as a council. And so now we gonna, so now, wait, hold up, hold up, hold up.
Wait, we're not gonna speak at a turn?
Let me do it, let me do what I do.
Hold up, hold up.
We argue over a $15 lunch.
Right now, Councilmember Frank is speaking and no one else is speaking.
We, we, we have, we have argued over a fif, whether we ought to have a $15 lunch. And we acquiesce to those wishes of councilmen who feel as though we should not have a $15 lunch. But then we come right back and say it's okay to have $200,000 spent anyway, you know, $200,000 spent, and it's no big deal. I, I understand. I understand how important public trust is and as a, a public official. But when we get down to the point where, where these discussions are being held over ideology, where the, and, and we're talking about whether or not we see something a different way. And that's what we're really, that's what brought this about. What brought this about was whether or not we violated the bond covenant when we had the project on, um, on Woodworth Boulevard. Let's just be, let's put it out there. Let's just talk about it and say it. We had our bond attorney come. We had people come. We got an opinion from the DA. We got an opinion from Texas Municipal League over whether or not we had done anything wrong as a council by utilizing those funds. We checked, we looked, we asked, we got, um, we got all of the things necessary to see whether or not we had violated and whether or not there was malfeasance and there was not. But dogmatically, it won't be let go. That's where we are. That's why we're here. Because you won't let it go. Because you, because four individuals on the council voted and allowed it to happen and transpire because they believed that we could walk and chew gum at the same time. And the project is a beautiful project on the gateway to downtown Port Arthur. It's not finished yet, it's not completed, but it looks beautiful. And individuals on council dared to believe that Port Arthur ought to have something nice, a gateway to downtown. That's why we're here. That's what happened. That's what transpired. Let it go. Let it go. Let it go.
Thank you, Councilmember Frank. Councilmember Lewis and?
The bond covenant is in place. And I talked, and I, I called the bond agent from the city attorney's, previous city attorney's office with the staff sitting in there. And he called it a violation. Okay, he, he said, "Councilman, I know where you're going with this. I know where you're going with this, but I'm willing to hold my nose." That's
Councilmember?
No, no, that's, I'm, 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 I'm in the meeting. I called him and the city attorney was there. You was not there.
I will get, I will determine
You was not there.
Who gets what time to talk. Now, we said two minutes. I've let everybody go over that and I will let, I will determine that. Okay? Thank you. No, sir. You've already spoken.
I got a motion to make if everybody's spoken.
He's still speaking. And you got people in the audience that's asking to speak as well.
But anytime, anytime you Let me say again. Anytime. That bond issue was strictly for infrastructure, not $7 million for landscaping a boulevard. It was for infra, you can, you can fix, uh, water and sewer lines if it's, if it's a problem. That was not the issue. They went down there and moved $14 million. Moved $14 million. And then, and people complaining about, what do y'all, I can leave my house and go in any direction and blow a tire. But y'all spending, I didn't have a problem with land, doing what, but you had to budget for that the next time around. You don't just take it out of a $50 million budget. You don't just do that. It is malfeasance when you're violating ordinance. It is, look it up. And also look up the definition of malfeasance and violating the city ordinance. It'll tell you. And all, in addition to that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Appreciate it. I have some people from the audience that would like to speak. You'll have, um, three minutes to speak.
Sure.
Thank you, Holland.
Okay. Hello, Councilman, my name's Holland Hoffer. I live at 3710 Dr. Martin Luther King Highway out on Pleasure Island. To me, I detect fear in this room right now. It's like we're discussing a forensic audit and everyone is shape shifting, trying to get away, doesn't wanna discuss it, is doing everything to avoid it. Councilmember Frank, you said that citizens aren't concerned and it's just, Councilmember Doucette that was really interested in this. I know that you're online and there are hundreds of citizens right now making comments about this. This has been the hot topic for the last several months. It was not even started by Councilmember Doucette. It was brought up by several other people and it, it, the ball got rolling and people have tons of questions about all sorts of things going on. So to say that the city is not interested in this is really a false statement because, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to say that citizens are not fully interested, those, that is who's driving this issue right now. Um, there's hundreds of them. You know, we waste, I'm not sorry, we don't waste. We spend a lot of money on what I would consider frivolous projects around the city. Um, I'm gonna refer back to the sign on Port Arthur. It was $264,000. This audit would cost around the same amount and we're looking at taking a look at hundreds of millions of dollars that hopefully nothing happened to, but if someone's misappropriated, it's gonna certainly pay for that audit really quickly. Councilmember Hamilton, I understand that the last time there was a forensic audit, nothing was done. That is not to say that this time, nothing will be done. There's a lot of people pushing for it now. There's a lot of effort behind it. And for the cost it takes to do one, I think it would really benefit the city. And moving forward, I think the citizens, I speak on behalf of a lot of them that are probably not here right now, some, some are. We'd like to do this. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Um, I think I saw another hand. Gloria's. Okay, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Gloria Sanchez, 6625 Jade Avenue. I have been watching meetings for over 18 years. All the time I have been watching council amend the budget every time that they want to. Last year, we amended budget to do, um, bonus for the employees that wasn't on the, oh, I'm sorry. That wasn't on, on budget. And we did it because you want to do it. You concerned about $200, $400, but I see you asking for $32 million. We, we gonna spend over $30 million on interest. It's lost money. Money that we paying for and it's just interest that we have to pay on the loan. But now you concerned about $200 or $400. I think every single one of you need to be concerned and be sure that whatever the 2017 forensic audit recommendations are followed and fixed, that we not have any more longer employees be sending like a vendors. The council are doing the things right. The every recommendation, because it was a recommendation, I was here when the forensic audit was, uh, reporting to council. And they was very clear and said, "We are nobody to do accusation, but you must follow the red flags." The explanation the council gave it to me was the employees who did this to the city are no longer here. Some of these employees are back. Are back. And just to be sure that everything that happened 10 years ago is not happening now, I think it's worth it to spend this money on it. And just to be sure that you have been not violated anything and you doing the things right, I think it's worth it to spend this kind of money. And like I said, you amend the budget three, four times, five times a year. And now this is the excuse? It's not on the budget? Really? Give me something better than that, please. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, Joanne Jones. I speak as a citizen of Port Arthur. You all have some parents. I understand that, but I can't go along with it. Even in a team of four where you all were voting, I just don't think it was right when you all were carrying on business. Y'all had a team of four that was done and it wasn't legal. And you know that you all, the way you voted to, to get what you all wanted. And here we, 75 million is missing, uh, inappropriate. And here we ask for two the citizens of Port Arthur, our own personal money. And you do not give us credit to use it. But you use it when you wanna use it. When it's the benefits you, you're not supposed to be, I mean, it's not about you all being benefited, it's about us. And all we ask for is this little few dollars, you know, compared to what we have and work to put it there and build our, uh, city. And you says, "No. Give us some credit. Give us some lean," you know, that we have something of too. Common sense, if not books says, you know, that we are able to use our money the way we see fit sometimes. Just sometimes. The traveling last year was, was real out of order. You know, some of the council members took advantage of a lot of traveling. And that's, it's, it's, it's just time. Give us some benefit. Give us some benefit. It's not gonna hurt you. If it hurt anybody, it's gonna hurt us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doucette, you calling for, we need to call for them. And, oh, I'm sorry. You'll come up, I'm sorry. And I should've had everybody state their name and address. I apologize, I missed that.
Hello, everyone. Linda Baker, I live at 2710 Evergreen Drive. I would like to say on behalf of the citizens who are concerned and would agree to having a forensic audit, having been a former forensic auditor for the government, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. I also believe that, um, having been an investor in a company called Lift Tech that some of you may be aware of, we were awarded, before I moved here from Central Texas, we were actually awarded to be able to repave Procter. And then whenever they got approved by Tech Dot to be able to utilize the formula that they came up with, they were told that the city didn't have the money. I just would like to know what happened. That's all. I would also like to know with many other questions that I have, just maybe, maybe there's no malfeasance. Maybe it's just the way in which the financials are written. Maybe there's just not enough granular descrip, uh, description for where the money has gone. But I say that we do this audit and if nothing's going on, then fantastic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton, Everfield?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there an opportunity for, Ms., Ms., oh my God, Ms. Lynn, our finance director, to, this will be a question to city manager, actually host a workshop on the audits that have already been done? Our audit is public information. It's readily available on this city website. So I understand that people have questions and they deserve to be answered. But a forensic audit is not the only way that these questions can be answered. So is there an opportunity that, and we, we had public hearings, mayor added public hearings during our budget and they were very extensive. We had some that were in the morning, some were, that were in the evening for the public to be able to come and ask questions before we even approved our annual budget. So we have the opportunity to ask these questions, but maybe the, the methods that we previously used were not as effective that, that needs to be for citizens to know that they can actually ask those questions.
Okay, city manager, you had July it all?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor and Council. With reference to Councilwoman Everfield's question, we do have all the audits posted on our website. All the current audits being posted on the website. I have asked staff to prepare a chronological report of the past forensic audits. I do have it with me. I'm prepared to post this on the website after it has been vetted by the city attorney to make sure that the information that we have compiled is very much accurate. And it goes back as far as 2005.
Oh, okay.
You know, so with all the audits and all the resolutions and all the outcomes and all the discussions and all the deeds, very detailed. And I'll be very much prepared to put it on the website for the edification of the public as well. With one of the, I think one of the learned gentlemen made the, the comment that we have used city money for signs. The money came from Hot Tax and council voted on several occasions approving the Hot Tax for the city signs all over the city, mayor. So this money was appropriately, it was, it, this money was appropriately spent according to state and, um, state law and city ordinances. All the ordinances, all the signs financed from Hot Tax. All the city of Port Arthur signs.
Yeah.
All the city of Port Arthur signs.
See, that was donated.
That was money that was donated, um, from a company.
Okay, wait, we're gonna have ordering here, okay? So we're not gonna speak from the audience. Right now, you've already spoken. City manager is speaking. And so, um, city manager will move forward with
Yes, I will move forward with
No one else is allowed to speak, I promise you. I will have you removed.
I mean, so Mayor, I will have the information vetted and posted on the website.
Thank you. I appreciate that. At this time, we're gonna entertain the motion and we'll take a roll call vote.
I make a motion